Opening Selectmen Meeting, January 16th. At the Ruttland Public Library. We stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion assigned, Treasury Warrant, 25 and payroll.
So moved.
All is in place.
Aye.
I don't see any minutes.
No minutes tonight, they're not quite, they weren't, they're not quite ready.
Did you say 25?
Treasury warrant, 15.
15.
Yeah, 15.
I heard what was read, if he said 25, that's what we meant.
No, 15.
Thank you.
Well, we got, at 6 o'clock, we have a, or choose it regional, school district Rutland, school and rooftop solar. Who are we talking with?
This is Brian.
Hi, Brian, come on up to the podium, please.
Where shall I go, over here?
Over there, please.
Can I drop one of these with everybody?
Yes, yes. I've got one. Abby printed out a couple of sheets from it, too, in your agenda packets.
Go right ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
It's nice to be on this side of the desk for a change. I'm a selectman in Hopkinton.
So would you introduce yourself to the cameras?
Sure, sure. Brian Herr, from Select Energy, based in Hopkinton, Massachusetts. I'm here this evening to talk, and I'm not sure if Joe's coming this evening or not from the schools.
I haven't heard back from him, so I don't know.
Okay, no problem. So I'm here this evening to just give you a brief overview of what the schools are looking at with Select Energy, our firm, specific to installing solar panels or a solar array on Naqog, is that the right pronunciation?
Naqog.
Central Tree as well as Glenwood. Those are three schools here in Rutland as part of the district that are excellent candidates for solar arrays to be installed on. Our firm, Select Energy, is the leading, largest commercial installer of solar in the state, and one of the programs that we offer through the Clean Energy Center on Beacon Hill and Power Options, which is a nonprofit entity that was charged with bidding out the process for municipalities and nonprofits across the state to participate in, and we won that bid. Our program with Power Options is we come, we install the solar array on the roof, we pay for the panels, we pay for everything, we own it all, we maintain it all, and then we sell the power to the schools behind the meters, a term in the industry, saving electricity coming in from EnGrid, instead the electricity comes in from the solar array at a discounted rate. So for these schools here in Rutland, the rate would be 9.8 cents a kilowatt hour. That's part of the, part of the bid package that we submitted to Power Options many months ago, so that's the rate for the size of the arrays that could go on the schools here in Rutland. It's a great program for municipalities. I know many municipalities around the state are doing this, I'm doing a lot of them around the state. My town, Hopkinton, has done a lot of solar work as well. I've done none of that, for obvious reasons, as you folks would know and understand, but it is a very good program for municipalities, and it's a good program for Select. The way it works for us is we have to do a lot of them. There's not a lot of margin in these things, looking at it from a business perspective, but if there's a volume play there, it works well. So, the more we do, the merrier. We started first looking at Naqog, and then we went to Central Tree and Glenwood. When we put the solar arrays on the roofs, we do not drill holes in the roofs. That's always a big concern that a lot of folks have, you know, when we spend money putting millions of dollars of membranes on roofs, or metal roofs, as the case is over in Glenwood, and then we start drilling holes in them, that can compromise the roof. So these arrays sit up there, and then they're ballasted, meaning we put blocks of ballast up there that are engineered to hold the array down per the wind code for the town of Rutland. We'll have building inspectors involved, we'll have structural engineers involved, electrical engineers, all that's part of a process that we would go through. Where the town comes in, and I'm not fully aware of all the details between the district and the town, but where I believe the town would come in is allowing us to access the roof, to the buildings that you folks own, the town owns, and then either through a lease, an easement, or a license agreement, we get access to that roof. So when we put the solar array up there, we need to go up there every now and then and maintain it, take care of it, and make sure the production is maxed. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, I could get into a lot of theory and detail, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have just a couple of things. This type of thing is really exciting, you know, I love hearing about these projects. And when we first, when I first talked with you, or was it Joe, I'm not sure, I asked a couple of questions first. Will this project include any educational incentives, like a kiosk at each of the schools so they can see the real-time solar generation? The other thing I had a question on, it was more for Joe, was that the district entered into a solar net metering power purchase agreement with a project out of, I think it was Bill Ricker, and I wondered if there was any kind of, if the two agreements would contradict each other in any way. I want to make sure that the district, or the district should make sure that they aren't going to be harmed in any way through either one of these agreements by doing both.
Sure. So, for the first question, specific to the curriculum enhancement, yes, there will be a kiosk placed wherever the schools decide they want to put it, or whomever decides where they want to put it. That kiosk is a big TV screen, and on that kiosk is going to show the production in the moment, it'll show the production for the week, and what it does, which is really cool, which kind of nails it with the kids, I think, quite a bit, there's a scrolling screen as well that will show how many cellphones are charged by the solar array every day, how many cars are quote "taken off the road" by the energy that's produced, equivalent amounts of energy, and it'll also show how many trees we saved. There's all kinds of environmental impacts that your solar array will reflect in that screen. I actually also do a, I can't believe I do it, but I do it, I do a course where I go down, I went to Malden Catholic recently, right before the holidays, and for three days I spent some time at Malden Catholic, teaching the kids about how the solar array works, how it impacts the environment, how the finances work, because you've got to have good technology, but you also have solid finances for things to advance in society. So we talked about a lot of that stuff. So we do that, we've done kiosks at Malden Catholic, at Mount Alvernia, at Fitchburg Public Schools, we'll be doing that in Clinton Public Schools, Grafton Town Hall, I'm leaving here and going to the Grafton Board of Selectmen Meeting to have another, very similar discussion, and then I'm hitting my own meeting later on tonight. But yeah, there will be a curriculum piece, specific to the question about, what was the second question?
It was the district's solar net metering power purchase agreement.
Yeah.
And we're the only town that they entered into that for, because the other municipalities in the district have their own utilities.
Right, Rutland's a great place for solar, because you folks have National Grid as your service provider, and National Grid has very strong programs for solar development in its territory. So the net metering agreements you have in place today, there's meters, or there's credits coming to specific meter numbers within the schools and within Rutland. So you can redirect those elsewhere. You can take, if, let's say, the array for, actually, the array for Naqog can be pretty good size, it'll be about 300 KW DC, whatever, it's good size. If that produces more than you need with, between the net metering credits and the array, two things can happen. We can either redirect those net meter credits to another meter in town, because you can do that with the utility, you can change that Schedule Z, it's called, and redirect those credits, or we can size the array differently. We'll have to look at that with Joe, and figure out how that makes most sense. Central Tree is actually a smaller array than I thought initially, because there's a lot of sort of stuff on the roof up there, and there's a couple of roof lines on Central Tree as well, and that creates some shadows, so that limited the size a little bit more. So maybe some of those net meter credits from Naqog would go to Central Tree, we could figure all that out, but you can redirect them.
Good, okay.
Okay.
So how many public systems have you done so far, public schools?
So, I'm not alone in this effort with Select Energy, but there's about 40 of them done to date, across Massachusetts.
Sorry, what did that mean?
Forty. Meaning, I'm not the only person doing, I have colleagues out there doing as well, I couldn't...
Select.
Select, oh yeah, absolutely, yeah.
About 40 Massachusetts public systems.
Massachusetts public systems, yes.
How many, have there been any other regionals done?
Uh, that's a good question, I can't answer it right now.
Okay. As far as ages of buildings that you've seen, you mentioned the roofs, and obviously Naqog, an older building, has a rubber membrane roof.
Yeah.
It has its own specific issues, it has a load bear issue.
Yeah.
It's probably the hardest roof relative to weight and snow load and all that.
Sure.
We've seen issues with it, to the point where if we get a heavy snow load in the spring, they see issues with a sliding door that's in the school, where it can't move as well as it did in June. Have you had experience with that?
So that is a very typical situation that we have to address, and sometimes we can't put a solar array up there because of that very problem. So what we do is we hire a structural engineer, it's an independent structural engineer, not someone from our firm. I'm a mechanical engineer by degree, but we have other folks that we hire outside with their own stamp and their own license on the line, and they come and they do a structural assessment of the buildings. I don't know if we've done it yet for the school or not, that's part of the process we would go through. So what we've done today is we've signed an LOI, a letter of intent, to try and figure this out. And this is part of that figure it out phase, if you will. Also, a structural analysis is part of that figure it out phase. So we'll have a structural analysis done, and that analysis will either create an affidavit, a stamped affidavit, that the structure can hold the additional weight of the array, or it cannot, and if it cannot, that will end that school's participation in the program.
Now, how is this working with the other four towns that do all have their own municipal?
So, we're still talking to them about what the rate would be, we have to get a special dispensation out of the state, it's likely going to be very difficult to make happen, frankly, because municipalities, not because of the people over there, but just the state laws around municipalities and how they procure energy, is very limited.
But the district's willing to go ahead with it in Rutland because of our National Grid.
So the district is eager to look at National Grid, because that one is a much smoother program. We have LOIs for, really, all the schools, or specific schools in each of the towns that makes sense from a roof perspective.
Now, getting off the roof perspective, because now it sounds almost like we're two schools that are in the same general location that might have structural issues, do you do installation arrays off roof if there's land available?
So, we do as a company, but the program that we bid to the states through Power Options does not include ground mounts.
Procure it under a different statute.
Ground mounts are a whole different animal, and it becomes, not only from a sort of state procurement process that we went through, but also an engineering and an installation process, and a cost model is wholly different, so the rates would be a lot different, and you guys wouldn't save any money, and we wouldn't make any money, so it's very, very difficult for ground mounts in this type of scenario.
And can I ask the stupid question, because I have to? They're going to work through school to try to get our school buildings, but then relative to our other municipal buildings?
Yeah, so the municipal buildings, I think I spoke briefly with you about this, too. So, the town has also entered into a solar net metering power purchase agreement where 85% of our usage is covered under that agreement. We're also looking at becoming a green community, looking to reduce our energy consumption. So, I think it's worth discussing, I just don't know how it's all going to fit together as we move forward, so.
We have those pieces already in place, does that make your job harder?
No, not necessarily, we'd have to just redirect what we do with certain things. If you're at 85%, you can still do a little solar on a couple of these other buildings, part of this, as part of this program, doesn't have to be school-specific, and you could get to 100% perhaps.
Okay.
So we'd, happy to look at that, if that makes sense.
Or we could look at it for the, for Water Enterprise in particular, that actually does have buildings, I mean, we could, we could possibly do something like that, too.
I guess I'm wondering what the argument would be against maximizing roof space for solar, if we had the opportunity to do it at no cost?
In your situation, in EnGrid, it probably does make sense to try and maximize as much as you can, however, the net meter cap, which is a piece of the puzzle for solar, has been reached not only in EnGrid private, but also EnGrid public. Recently, that took place. If that was still available, then we could move power credits all over the place.
Where are we with that cap?
We're trying to raise that. I was actually in Beacon Hill today, it's part of my job, is I was down there with Senator Spilka, and several other folks from the solar industry, talking about net meter caps and trying to increase them. There's legislation pending right now that the caps would go up. If they go up, then that frees up EnGrid and Eversource, well, really, Eversource is okay still, but EnGrid would get freed up, and we could be a lot more flexible. But I think, you know, we won't, it won't make sense for us to overproduce, because if you guys can't buy what we produce on the roofs of the schools, or any other building that we look at, we can't sell it to you, so that doesn't make sense. We'll, the engineering will kind of figure it out over a period of time.
It's hard to imagine we couldn't find a customer in town that would use our electricity, that we would, you know what I mean, a municipal customer?
Well, yeah, but you have to have the roof there, because we can't take it from one meter to another meter, because that's, that's the net metering cap problem, yeah.
I think we could figure out some... Yeah, I think that we could, once we move, once we move down this road with the green communities, we're working with an energy consultant, Beth Greenblatt from Beacon LLC, and, you know, maybe we could have ongoing conversations with her to see how we might be able to do this. We also have a couple of roofs right now that do need to be replaced, and so they'd be good candidates, especially public safety, I'm thinking, would be good candidates after the roofs are replaced, so.
So, are you in the process of replacing those roofs right now?
Well, we're in the process of talking about financing the replacement.
So, let me throw an idea out there, because this could be part of the program, and it would be allowed...
Is it Elon Musk, because I would be all over that.
What's that?
Solar.
So, Musk is storage, right? So storage is the next thing following solar. And yeah, we'll be back to talk about storage someday, too, if we go forward with the arrays. As far as the roof goes, how big are these buildings roughly?
Oh, I...
Public safety must be...
Is one of our biggest municipal buildings.
Okay, so it's 20,000 square feet, okay?
DPW is another, has a metal roof, another possible candidate.
So the way we could do a roof for you, we could do the roof for you, and that could be, would be part of that state procurement process that we went through, because it's all about public procurement, making sure we do everything right. You know, as a selectman, I get that part. You can literally have us do the roof, put the array on the new roof, and then sell you the power. The power will not be at a discounted rate, it may be the same, it may be a little bit more, it may be a little bit less, we'll show you the numbers, it's all an open book.
We got a roof out of it?
You get a roof out of the deal, and you get green energy, but you might not save money on your electricity, because we had to go out and pay for a 20,000 square foot roof, it's looking like 200 grand, maybe, 150 grand.
How long would that contract be for electric?
20 years.
I'd like to hear more about that.
It's a really good, that would be a really good thing to look at, anything.
Interesting.
Where are you making your money there, if you're giving us...
So, over 20 years, that rate is what pays us back. What we do is we go to the bank, so we're going to put an array on the roof, let's say we put an array on the roof at Central Tree for a million dollars. We go to the bank and we get 800 grand, because they want us to have some skin in the game. We put 800 grand on the roof, and over time, you know, with you guys paying that rate, and the tax credits we get, because we're a for-profit entity, and the state incentives that we get, because we're the ones that put the 800 grand on the roof, we put all that into the mix, and over a 20-year period, we pick out a 4% or 5% return. I said earlier, there's not a lot of margin in these things, but if we do a lot of them, it's a lot of cash flow for annuity, it's an annuity cash flow for our business as well.
Interesting way to finance the roof projects. So, are you on the state bid list for that type of work as well, the roof replacement and the rooftop solar arrays?
I can't say if we're on the state bid list for the roof replacement piece, I know that we have worked roof replacement deals into the Power Options agreement.
I see.
That the state Clean Energy Center is what we all sort of sorted through, and they have been sanctioned by the powers-to-be, so I'm not afraid of getting my team involved, or my colleagues involved, in helping to see if that makes sense or not.
Have you seen a town go through that yet, doing an RFP on a complicated project like that, where the roof replacement is included in a solar project? Because to me, you're not bidding on the cost of the project at that point, are you? You're bidding on the value of the project.
Yeah, so that, the whole RFP process is what we already went through with Power Options in the state.
Right, but...
And they put adders in the agreement and said, okay, if you need a roof, here's an adder, and based on how many dollars per square foot for the roof, you change the rate from 9.8 cents, remember that 9.8 I said you would get? That was the bid rate, right? That changes based on additional costs that we would have to cover.
So yeah, you can structure an RFP that way.
Well, he's kind of suggesting that you don't need it, that they've already done that legwork.
Exactly.
But for the roof replacement, too? Okay, we can certainly look at the state contract, yeah.
Put a pin in that. All right, so back to the original program, why you're here.
Sure.
It sounds to me like you've got several hurdles to get over, before we know this is going to work, even in Rutland with our easy National Grid, you know...
Easy's a relative term, yes.
Well, exactly, well, but relative to the municipal...
That's correct, yeah.
So, we may have two out of our three buildings that can't do this, we don't know that yet.
So we've had an electrical engineer look at each building so far, and they have to stamp a drawing that says it's going to work, it's going to interconnect fine into your building.
Yep.
The power that will come off the roof, so we have that. We have a structural engineer either coming out here, has been out here, or will be out here soon, as part of the process. I have not seen those reports yet, so your concern about deflection of the roof and the structure will be addressed one way or the other. And then we have to make the application to the utility, or complete an application to the utility EnGrid, which includes all this stuff and lots of other things, and a big check. And then we send that all off to National Grid, and they come back and say yea or nay. So all three of those have to be in the affirmative, before we can come back and say, folks, okay, we got all three, would you guys now talk about easement, license, or lease, whatever you want to look at, you know? Town meeting votes would stall the project, because we all know our town meetings are out in May, or whenever it is, so it's really, whichever of those three, your town council and you folks could be comfortable with going without town meeting approval, okay? So we're doing it in Grafton tonight, and it's a licensing Grafton, in Clinton it's going to be an easement. Every town has a different, every town council's got a slightly different view of this, so we're flexible about that, but town meetings typically would kill the deal, because the time it takes for a town meeting to happen, and the evolution of the solar program in Massachusetts in 2018, do not line up.
So the Board of Selectmen has the authority to enter into contracts in excess of three years, so it does not take a town meeting vote, so the issuance of the RFP doesn't necessarily require a town meeting vote, but we certainly check with our legal council. We use KP.
Sure, okay. And all that would be part of this due diligence process as well, but we're just well down that path with several of the others that are coming online right now. But I know town meeting guides a lot of what we do as select people in Massachusetts, but in this case, it's imperative, like time, I hate to use the term, time is of the essence, but it is in the solar world, because on June 30th, the state incentive package that's in place today, without getting into too much detail, is going to change on July 1. Now, it's been extended a couple of times, but the SREC program, which is what Massachusetts operates under today for solar incentives, is going away at some point in 2018.
So what's your timeline, your ideal timeline on this project, is what?
So we're, we have the applications into the utilities already for the three schools, but we don't expect to hear back from them, I think, until sometime in mid to late February. And then after that, we'd come back and talk about, you know, the access to the roof and the documents that you'd be comfortable with, and if everybody lines up and we're all organized, we'd go, probably, starting on the roof sometime in March, physically up there.
Oh, okay. Huh.
There you have it.
I guess I, yeah. How are you working that with the schools in session? How long does this installation take?
So the panels on the roof will be, depending on the size of the array, anywhere from two to three weeks. It goes very quickly up on the roof. There's a lot of work that's done in the electric rooms, kind of on the ground floor, out of sight. There will be a pitter-patter on the roof for a couple of weeks. We've done some weekends with certain schools if it becomes a problem, so it's, we can be a little bit flexible with that, but there is a pitter-patter, but it goes very quickly. And then you kind of wait for the utility to do their piece, and then it goes very quickly. There's a lot of hurry-up-and-wait stuff as part of the development.
In your experience, have you worked very closely with the town and the school district simultaneously in order to get this done? I know that we're a little unique in that the school district leases the buildings from the town, but have you worked closely with both parties in order to move this through the towns?
Yeah, so there's a lot of work that will be done with the building department here in Rutland, because the building permits have to be completely filled out, and all the affidavits, and all the engineering drawings, and all that has to go through. We spend a lot of time kind of between now and probably end of February on stuff like that, and once we get the utility piece back, we'll come in and say, we've got those three pieces of the stool in place, and we'll talk to you folks again. And then, with the schools being part of it, you know, Joe and I are talking constantly about sort of the finances and how this will all play out, but it, there's a lot of communication that does need to go on. What I say to our clients is, I need 10 minutes of your time every day for about three months, 10 minutes. If we can do 10 minutes of focused conversation, emails back and forth, we get it done. It's pretty, it's a light lift for you folks, it's a lot for us, but we do need, when we reach out, please give us that five minutes to send something back, and that's really all it takes.
How long has Select been around?
So solar started in Massachusetts in 2008 in earnest, and we were formed in 2009. We've done approximately 400 and, probably about 430 projects now to date, all in the commercial space, so we're the leading commercial installer of solar in the state, and we've got lots of references and all that stuff for you folks, if you, when you want it, and Joe's checked a lot of that already, I believe. But we're not the leading solar installer in the state, because we don't do residences. There's a lot of residences, you know, out there, but when you do a residence, you tend to step on bushes and flowers and things like that, and that frustrates everybody, including us, because then we spend more time fixing flower beds than installing solar, and it's not really a good business model, for what we do, anyway.
All right, so are you able to get us the information on a prior regional school project? And I guess, this may be more for Margaret than you, but I think the complication we have, and I know this has come up, at school committee level, is if Rutland is handling its own electric bill by doing this, and the other towns aren't able to do it, even if they wanted to, how that's going to affect budgeting and how they're going to handle it? So I don't think that's as much you, but it's a big question for us.
Yeah, I'll look into whether we've done regionals or not, or they've just been publics, and let you know.
And if they were regionals, if multiple towns had different constructions when it came to electric services, right? If we were all National Grid, this probably would be a much less complicated discussion.
So, yeah, so the school is responsible for payment of their school account, so that should help simplify this a little bit, because the accounts are in, the accounts are the districts.
That's correct.
Yeah, so...
But that's still the budget, that's the operating budget.
That's true.
So, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Yep, all right, thank you very much.
Anything else, all set?
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time, and I hope you have a great meeting. Just so you know, we have a $2.7 million gap in Hopkinton, that's what I'm going back to right now, so.
Oh, Michael Dell.
We have to count our lucky stars.
You've thought about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, drive safely.
Take care, Brian. Drive. Hey, Pablo Tom.
Come on, Mr. Phil. Sure. Oh. Jesus. Okay. I guess Sheila asked me to come, we've been in contact this weekend since the fire at Countryside on Friday night, so I just want to make sure that everybody kind of knows what's going on. I'm a member of CERT, and we got activated on Friday, and I showed up probably around 5 o'clock, most of CERT was already there, I think one other person showed up after me. We ended up, kind of, what CERT was doing was kind of rounding up all of the residents, kind of taking their information for the Red Cross before the Red Cross showed up, and when the Red Cross did show up, and as the fire went out, we kind of, as the fire was down, and they were able to go in and kind of collect a few things with the fire department, we made sure, we coordinated and made sure that they were all set with the firefighters, the firefighters knew who needed to go into what unit, and then we were told that the Red Cross was going to meet with people, because it was pouring out, so they were going to meet at the fire station. So, we ended up moving to the fire station with them. So, you know, they had the CERT members, we kind of scattered across town and picked up some food, brought it back to the fire station, and we were more there just to kind of take care of any needs that people had while they were there. Turns out that there was a young family there with a baby and his pants were wet. And so, kind of all of this happened from this kid's pants being wet. So, we're in the fire department and I said, well, Paula lives over there and the food pantry's right there. So, I went over to Paula Stitson's and tried to get, get her to open the food pantry for us, but she wasn't home. So, I badgered dispatch and we called Lynn and Karen to come over. They were there within 10 minutes. Opened up the food pantry. They're like, do they need food? So, they're throwing food in a bag for them. They're getting them clean pants and dry pants. And we realized there really was a need for these people. The Red Cross was giving them vouchers for hotels and, you know, a small bag of supplies, but some of these people literally had nothing as they left. So, I said, we've got to do something. Overnight, social media blew up. Everybody's on Facebook saying, what can we do? What can we do? What can we do? So, Sheila and I met on Saturday morning with Lynn and Karen and we tried to put together a plan. People had already started dropping off clothes at the fire station, especially when we were asking, you know, just from each other, does anyone have some clothes for this kid? So, we kind of stopped the clothing donations because we realized quickly that we would get a ton of clothes, but not sure what to do with them all. So, we asked for gift cards and gift cards for just general things and gas and stuff like that, donations, and also food donations for the food pantry. So, Saturday and Sunday, the food pantry opened up for a couple hours each day. There were people there. We said, don't drop off gift cards without it being attended. So, Lynn and Karen opened up the food pantry with, with people there collecting food. The shelves are overflowing at this point. And then on Sunday, I said, okay, so how do we coordinate and get this back to these people? So, I kind of, I used the list that we took of contacts and I called all the people that we had phone numbers for. I had already met them all Friday night. I knew them all by sight. So, I called them all and I had 20 attempted contacts. I attempted to contact 20 of the 24 units. A couple of the units, I'm not sure if they're vacant or not. I'm still, I still have to get information for one of the units. The person's in the hospital, so I can't contact that person. We ended up helping 10, 10 units with, for a total of 23 people. We distributed food and gift cards yesterday through the food pantry to those people. Eight of them told us that they're all set for now. Some of them said, you know, we're, we've got family here. We're taken care of. You know, whatever their situation was, just give it to the people who need it. And then a couple of them said, we're all set for now, but we might need money later when it comes time to get furniture and whatever else we need. We have insurance, but we're not sure exactly what it's going to cover. The one is in the hospital and then the other three that we're not sure about. So, that's where we are right now. We've collected a bunch. We still have some gift cards available. We certainly still have food in the food pantry. I'm going to kind of try to keep in touch with these people and get the other people in the meantime. But one thing I told Sheila was, one of the things we're not sure about, we know that there's been at least one Facebook page started, or not Facebook, a GoFundMe started. We know that we've seen a couple of businesses saying that they're collecting gift cards and stuff, but we haven't coordinated. So, I'm not really sure what to do about that in terms of.
What do you feel the best coordination approach is here? It's probably better to try to centralize it than have it in multiple hands or places or whatever. So, what do you think is best? What will work best to get everybody?
Yeah, let Karen.
Well, for most of you that are on Facebook, you know there's the Rutland Food Pantry site and that's what we've been using as the, letting the people know what's going on. Like my sister Lynn is home tonight because someone dropped off a lot of used household stuff, which we don't have the ear reader store to stuff. We've got clothes over there at Saint Patrick's and we got the food. So, she's putting another blurb out and some of you probably read, this is how we were coordinating, please stop the clothes, stuff like that. So, now we're going to say, please stop the household items. Because a lot of these people are looking for that stuff because that's what the gift cards are for. So, between the Rutland Food Pantry post and one of the businesses that Michelle had mentioned was asking for the gift cards, I reached out to her today and told her who I was. So, if we can have one central place, because I've got all the cards, the amounts, what we did with the families we did meet with, because we weren't sure how many were to come forward, you didn't know how much gift cards we were going to get. So, we gave them, you know, $50 each, so depending what the family size is. But they'll be getting more than that because I heard from a church in Boylston who did a collection on Sunday and wanted to know from me what's the best thing. And I said, go get Dollar Tree gift cards because then the people can go buy their own personal needs. You know, we don't have a lot of storage up there. So, I don't know if I answered your question, but between the Rutland Food Pantry on Facebook seems to be the social media that reaches out. Sheila, you know, between the three of us, we were coordinating starting Sunday morning to get the word out to people. But then the gift cards, if somebody didn't feel comfortable, like who's this Karen Greenwood? And you decided, we talked about the safety building over the weekend, but, you know, a secure place and then they contact me. So, I think that would be up to you to decide. But a lot of the people had insurance. They're all set. You know, they own their condo. So, I think when we first heard the number, 50 people, everybody panicked and it was going to start dropping off stuff. So, the numbers have been a little less than we thought and some of us are grateful. Some did take their clothes home to wash them. But what about the other stuff in the apartments? That's going to be up to, you know, they were asking us, am I going to get my deposit back and stuff? And we said, if you're renting, you need to contact the landlord. You know, we don't know how all that's going to work, but they know where we are. All the residents have Michelle's contacts, so we can have one central person and.
That's good. Can you, now can you share that on camera so that people watching can know who to contact and where they should drop off gift cards or?
That's, that's what we're not sure about. So, we had people at the food pantry like for a couple hours each day, but that's really where, we're not sure how to keep this going forward where we could have a secure spot for drop-off.
Yeah, it was partly why I was hoping they would come tonight because what we saw was our first responders, obviously during the event. I mean, amazing job. You know, I know Seth couldn't be here tonight, but we had nine communities responding. CERT got activated, police, our dispatch, the four ladder trucks in use. Amazing response, amazing work they did to knock that fire down quickly and to keep it as contained as they did. And then CERT stepping in to help with that immediate aftermath. At that point, the fire department releases the building. Red Cross comes and helps the people through three days with certificates and the people scattered to the four winds. Some of them were in hotels in West Boylston and Stirbridge. And what we were seeing, as Michelle mentioned, was that people had a lot of questions and once that immediacy is over, there was nowhere for them to go. And we knew at that point that town's role was, was over. So, to have found a local nonprofit with the knowledge base and with the security that the food pantry had, it seemed like the right direction to go in and it was fantastic. I mean, I can't imagine it having worked out relative to the requests that we were getting any more smoothly than it did. So, to Michelle's point, and it came up over the weekend and, you know, nothing you could do at the point, was how can the town, if anything, step in? I appreciated that there was an offer to open up the basement of Community Hall, which they ended up really only needing for a few hours. They did put a stop to the donations that people couldn't use. And you want to give people an outlet to help. They just, they wanted to help in that immediate, you know, immediacy and what the people didn't need was more stuff to take to their hotel, to take to their temporary residence.
Not to volunteer every single department in town, but I'll go ahead and volunteer a few. So, I think maybe we can help because we've got consistent office hours during the week. Maybe we can help by having a location in each of our buildings. So, we could say, you know, my office or the Board of Selectmen's office where we're staffed most of the day, in Community Hall, maybe go to the, volunteer the Town Clerk's Office. And then at Public Safety, of course, dispatch, we could have just drop-off locations for gift cards and we can keep that safe and you can, you know, come and collect it. We can contact you or something. So, maybe we could help in that way.
That would work well because people are already contacting me and like, all right, bring them to my house, but.
Yeah.
I'd like to have a place. I don't want to have that for two, you know.
But I think to your point, essential point, there are a couple of locations that are available throughout real business.
We could probably do library too. I'm thinking we could do that too, so.
Would be appropriate. But to your point, and I think it's a point well made, at this point in time, gift cards is what's really needed. The closed donation, things of that nature, because of temporary housing and things of that nature, space is limited. So, definitely I think the request for additional cards for anyone that can make additional donations would be great. And to Margaret's point, recapping, library, Town Clerk's Office, Board of Selectmen's Office and dispatch are four different locations that can be utilized for anyone who wants to drop that off towards the fire rescue effort.
So, how do we?
All right.
Like what do we do? Is it a lock box or are they just going to, like logistics here? That's what we're not sure.
Yeah, so I'm going to obviously have to touch base with the departments who are going to be the, you know, the point, the point departments and just advise them as to how to, how to store it. I mean, each of these departments has, has a secure area where we could keep something. Yeah.
And should we advise the two departments? Will you be the two contact people that will be coming around collecting them? So that they know.
Yeah, we can coordinate all that tomorrow.
And then we're, and then, you know, just being aware that there are all these other, like Karen said, she reached out to the business that we saw on Facebook, but then there are other people taking collections. We certainly want them to know that they can contact us. We'll try to contact them. There's a fundraiser next week that we saw, so. But that's up to them. They're not really affiliated with us and, you know, we don't want to say we own it.
Right.
No, and you don't. And I think, Margaret, that was partly why it was so good to see the Rutland Food Pantry, which is a known entity, step forward because as we all know, when there's an event of this magnitude and this many people affected, you see those weird GoFundMe pages pop up. You never know who's administering them. You know that GoFundMe is getting some of the cash to begin with and then you don't know where the rest of the cash is really going. So, there's, there's risk there, even setting up a bank account. There is a person who has to put their name on that bank account. There's tax liability there, so they're.
Yeah, and the town's options are limited too as far as this type of fundraising, but we can certainly help by, by being drop-off points.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
No, I was just going to say, just as an example, when the word went out, there was two people posted that clothes were needed for the child that Michelle referred to that was up there Friday night. And if you picture an eight-foot table piled this high with all three T.
Yeah.
You know, so that's why we were like, because you don't know. We don't know the adult sizes, what other kids they are. So, that's why we put a star per said the gift cards would let them shop. Yeah. It's overwhelming.
Great, great job.
Thank you so much.
Great community effort, you know?
It was really something to watch.
Something to see. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well done.
Ready? Dick Williams, Overlook Road. I handed out, it's a skip, I don't know if you got a copy of it anyways, but I went to the Central Mass Regional Plan and they had a discussion about Governor Baker and his 135,000 homes that he wants to have built in Massachusetts. And after the discussions and some of the people started laying into them, let's say, I do believe that, and my comment was apropos, where I think they're putting a cat before the horse and they're not doing, in my opinion, the due diligence that, where are you going to put these houses? Where are you going to come up with all the money? Where, you know, a town like Rutland for infrastructure, I mean, all kinds of.
And Rutland, who is exceeding its threshold of development. This is really shades, this is kind of shades of 40B, the law that requires the affordable housing, the flat threshold across every single town, no matter if you're Monterey way out in the Berkshires or Needham, you know, in the eastern part of the state. So, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, it's, it is true. And to me, one of the biggest things that's going to be happening, if this thing does get passed and pushed, is zoning change. Will not take any more, you know, like a super majority, three thirds of it will go to a simple majority, 51% of the vote.
I heard you were a very strong advocate for our town at that meeting, so thank you.
I was, I was somewhat under control.
Somewhat?
No, you gave an impassioned statement and I think it got through because I know you weren't alone. I know there were a lot of selectmen who, as you say, were, were speaking out.
Yes.
So, thank you.
You're welcome. We've got to stay on top of it. That's all I can say about it. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? New business.
You have, yeah, the Bryce Lemon Sewer Connection violation. So, as the board knows, Town Council has recommended that DPW Superintendent Gary Kelleher issue a notice of violation of Stop Work Order on the Bryce Lemon Estates Main Street Sewer Crossing due to a violation of Section 3.21 of the Town Sewer Use Regulations and that the board formally ratify the issuance of the Notice of Violation and Stop Work Order by vote at tonight's meeting. The Notice of Violation and Stop Work Order was issued by Gary and delivered by Constable to Bryce Estates Incorporated, Cleland B. Blair Jr. President last Thursday, January 11th. Section 3.21, for everyone's information, reads, "The applicant for the building sewer permit shall notify the superintendent when the sewer is ready for inspection and connection to the public sewer. The connection and testing shall be made under the supervision of the superintendent or duly authorized representatives and no backfilling is allowed until all appropriate inspections are made." So, that was the portion that was, that was violated. I echo Town Council's recommendation and recommending that the board ratify the issuance of the Notice of Violation and Stop Work Order. And then Gary can speak to progress on compliance.
Could have a motion to ratify.
Motion to ratify is presented.
One second. I'll second. Either one of us.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, excuse me. Listening to Margaret's comments, that's precisely how this all happened. I have been in conversation with not only Margaret, but Greg Corbo from KP Law. I do have here for you, Margaret, and for the board, Dick Salzes' stamp of when it was delivered, what time and so on and so forth. But to let you know where we are now, I received a call from Mr. Blair immediately after his receipt of this letter, which I expected. And after we got through our, our introductions, if you will, I told him what was going on here, what had to be followed, what had to be done. Once I talked with him and his contractor, I contacted MassDOT. And I was given, we were given a special permit, which included permission to redig the road. Now, MassDOT's specs say that they can't touch any Mass Highway or Mass State Route from November 1st till April 1st. However, they did grant me that permission. And Mr. Blair agreed to dig up and expose for inspection the sewer lines that cross underneath Main Street. Now, the permit for MassDOT says that if jacking is attempted and fails, then they have to go through the permitting process for open trench. That's MassDOT's ball of wax, not, not the DPW's. So, I've contacted MassDOT again and they will be on-site with me when the ditch is open and ready for inspection. So, at this point, with this situation, Mr. Blair will be on compliance. It's scheduled for this Thursday, weather permitting. So, he knows what he has to do. It's been explained what he has to do. I'm confident that will happen and that will take place in two days. Now, this was all put together, you know, between Greg Corbo and myself and Margaret, obviously to make sure that our eyes are dotted and our Ts are crossed. So, I approve of this letter, obviously, or else I wouldn't have sent it to the board for ratification. So, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer. And I believe Margaret has also set up that if you need to speak to legal about that, he is available by phone.
Yep.
All right, good. Okay.
Thanks for following up on all of that.
There you go.
And the correspondence, marijuana moratorium and the board's referral through the planning board.
So, marijuana moratorium. As the board knows, a survey went out in the annual street listing. Surveys are now, are now being returned. And someone, Anita and Peter Crane, will be coordinating the compilation of the responses to those surveys. I, it was noted to the board a few meetings ago that it's, it's quite possible that the town is going to have to go to a special town meeting early in the spring in order to approve the marijuana moratorium because the deadline is April 1st. We'd have to take action before April 1st in order to be able to enforce our moratorium, which I'm going to recommend be put in place until the end of December. So, at your next meeting, I'm going to come back with a proposal on a special town meeting to adopt a marijuana moratorium.
Why?
In order to prevent applicants who are able to start filing applications on April 1st to come into the town without the town having time to determine where the establishments should be put, what types of establishments. There are a whole number of establishments that could be put here.
A town that has, how many liquor licenses do they have? Eight?
It's unlikely that they're going to come, but they could and they could do it anywhere.
No, I just.
I'm looking for one application.
How many years have we been talking about growing, no pun intended, a commercial base here in Rutland? And we have a cannabis commission that's supposed to be releasing a report soon that my understanding was that they were going to be giving direction to communities.
Yeah, I'm going to be going, there's going to be a public hearing actually in Worcester[1799.54] on February 7th, 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon, so by the cannabis, by the cannabis commission.
I'm wondering if the cannabis commission members, some of them, will be there this weekend at the conference?
Probably.
Because I do think one of the...
There's actually a workshop on...
Exactly, one of the workshops, so I guess where I'm headed is, it seems a little early for the talk of a special meeting when we don't know how this survey is going to come out, we don't know what the cannabis commission is doing quite yet, or what they're going to provide us.
Except we do know the dates.
Know the dates.
We do have the dates.
If we can set the dates for the special, we can always cancel them. At least you have, you meet your notice requirement.
So the, at your meeting on the 29th, we will have already gone to the MMA Conference, and probably, we probably will have had a chance to talk with some state officials on that, and we can get more information. So I don't have information on, on date, timeline, or anything for special town meeting yet, all I know is, if we do have to have it, it would have to be before April 1st, which is the date the applications become available.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So on the 29th, there'll be more to come, more information.
Excellent. You're up again, Gary.
Okay, I've got a few things here on the agenda to talk about, and I have a couple of comments to make. So, first up, we have Moulton Mill Road, Depot Road. I dug out the old files that I found in the DPW. So what I have found, going back in longhand to 1921, is it's, it says it's inconclusive, but I don't find it that way, because there's too many question marks. It does say that Moulton Mill Road goes from Palmagussett to Miles. It's referred to several times, and it does go from Palmagussett to Miles, but it's also referred to in other ways, calling from a resident approximately 100 feet on Moulton Mill Road, two miles is a private drive. So, a couple of things that I've talked to Margaret and others about is, we have done, the last time we did maintenance to Moulton Mill Road all the way through, including, if you call it Depot Road, was 2006, when we laid millings on the entire roadway. Now, I'm sure some of you are in town, and you remember that the Moulton Mill end of it on Palmagussett was closed because of disrepair. Therefore, a resident was giving, given a right-of-way to go from his house to Miles. That turned into a private easement. That being said, we do currently plow, we do maintain, we have not added material as of 2006, but we do plow it, and we do have a town water line that goes on it that recently, calendar year 2017, we did have to go in and dig up and repair. This has caused heartache with, with some of the residents on that road, especially since now there are new dwellings. So what I'm looking into, what I'm proposing, is that if it's possible, Margaret, I know I mentioned this to you briefly, that private easement be turned to a public easement because of our lines in it, we currently plow it, and when needed, we maintain it minimally so as not to ruin our equipment during and with the season. So, that's where I am, I have the whole folder here, I do have to talk to Legal, I do have to talk to Margaret.
I've spoken with Legal twice on it, the latest, the latest, most recent today, and so I have, you know, we're trying to gather information to see what the town's options are.
Okay, and I did see your email before I came up here, so understood, but I did have it as an agenda item.
Okay.
Excuse me, so if there's no questions on that, I'll move on. To non-criminal disposition, which it says, section 2, which is placing of snow or debris in the roadway. Now, several years ago, I did issue a couple of tickets for that, that infraction, and it's happened again, different locations, but it's not just a matter of pushing snow across a public roadway, it's a matter of pushing snow out and leaving it in a public roadway, blocking a breakdown lane and a part of a travel lane. So I have issued tickets, I'm gonna give the board a heads-up on that, they're not very costly tickets, first offenses 25, second 50, third 100, but it's, it's really got a, people have to understand that is a dangerous situation. This is, somebody can hit that in the middle of the night, and certainly cause a serious accident, or roll over, or, and people will get hurt. So just if any, if the Selectmen's Office gets any calls, I have issued tickets.
Gary, I have a question.
Shoot.
Has, have you had to go back to the same places over again after you've issued the tickets?
Since I've issued the tickets, no, we haven't had a snowfall. But snow had to be removed by the department on East County Road, because it was placed out, out in the roadway. I won't say the department did it, I did it personally, because as I was, I was patrolling, I noticed that, and it just, it can't happen, that just can't happen. It's an accident waiting to happen, and I don't want to see people get hurt. Anything else on that?
Can you, can you send the Board of Selectmen's Office copies of the tickets?
They go to the town clerk. I have a copy in my, in my office, but I have not sent the Board of Selectmen.
Can you?
Yes, I certainly can.
Thanks.
And I will. And thank you for making the guy's food, in case I forget to say that, don't forget your dish. So the last thing I have is department updates. This is kind of a touchy one for me. So I would like to start off by saying, and I'll start off with how I actually feel about some of the things that have gone on. Not as far as the department goes, but several meetings ago, we, the department heads, were accused of pointing fingers at each other, not cooperating, perhaps being ignorant. Not acceptable to me, and I think everybody knew my feelings at that time. But I want to tell you, the board, Margaret, and all, that I have not seen a more cooperative rank of department heads elsewhere. If we have issues, we have department heads, meetings monthly, as everyone knows, and that's where we settle our differences or solve our problems, more times than not solve our problems, not differences, because we know we're all here for each other. So I really, as you all know, that night, and I don't want to open another can of worms, took offense to those statements, didn't appreciate them, all came from, I think, no, I don't think, I know it all came from the sewer infractions that we've had in town, those have been worked on, are constantly patrolled by not only myself, but department members. So, with that being said, we'll talk about a couple of snowstorms, because as everybody knows, these guys, since it started snowing, have been working every weekend since, and they gave up their entire, guys and gals, their entire Christmas weekend, not Christmas Day, the whole weekend. Also, it happened to get on New Year's. So I would like to, and I'll just mention a couple of names, and I'm only doing it by sewing-room-table order, so you know, it's in no particular order of importance, but two, Chris Koloski, Daniel French, Eric Kelly, Dan McCaruso, Adam Kelleher, John Jankowski, John Brown, Carl Christensen, Nancy McCaruso, Donna Salz, Nancy Nichols, Neil Viner, Pete DeFlorio, Steve Cannel, these guys have the utmost respect of mine, because without these guys doing what they did, and the sacrifices they made, this town would be in tough shape. And I thank them, I applaud them, and I'm not looking for really any, any other praise than what I give publicly to them. But I'll tell you, on Maple Ab in the last couple of weeks, January 3rd, January 11th, we had two major water breaks. One happened when it was four degrees, prior, it was at 10:30 at night, prior to the big storm moving in. So those guys were in the ditch, in the hole, we were all there repairing that water break. It got done in time, for the first time, we had to go out and hit the road. Those guys worked 32 hours straight, plowing snow after that. The very next week, we had a water break on the same line, 8-inch main, 40 feet north of that water break. Again, same thing, snow and ice situation, had to get in the ditch, fix the water break. Fortunately, if you can look at it that way, they happened when they did, because a week later, we had a fire at Countryside, and both breaks were across the street from Countryside Estates. If they broke during the fire, we'd be really in tough shape. So I thank those guys for getting in the, in the ditch, and I'd also like to say, again, with the cooperation of departments, and, and they're not here, but between Fire Department and Police Department, they were more than helpful. Sub-zero, pretty much, temperatures, not pretty much, sub-zero, we got details, and we got them immediately, and they stayed out there with us. Fire Department and Police Department were both, both very informative about the fire, about the traffic, they knew what we had to do, and they helped us get through it. So also, my hats off to those departments, and honestly, to all your department heads who put an effort to make in this town click, and I appreciate it, I applaud them, and they have my devotion, my respect, and I'm very proud, very proud of that department. And that's all I got.
On my note, I have another meeting to go to, Gary?
Thanks, Dick.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, sir. Margaret had to leave, Joe, to another meeting, and you're gonna pick up where she...
Where she would have.
Where she would have.
Well, I'm certainly not an ample replacement for her, I can assure you. The reason I'm here is very, very simple, you know, I came in front of you folks, I don't know, I guess I do have a date here, whatever, a couple of months ago, and we talked about the assisted living and so on and so forth. And I guess I'm just curious, what, if anything, you as a board have done about discussing this, taking a position on it? You know, we're attempting to gain some momentum here, and I, I think it's critical that the Board of Selectmen make a statement as to whether they think this is something of interest to them or not. So that's really simply why I'm here. Have you discussed it? We have, several times. Okay.
Generally, when you were there.
Yeah, well, I mean, without me, I guess as a board, have you discussed it, you know, have you taken a position on it, do you think it's a good idea, should, should we be pursuing this? You know, we're going like gangbusters, talking to other boards, we have a meeting tomorrow with Representative Ferguson, Representative Goby, McGovern's office, now whether that's gonna happen or not based on the weather, who knows, but I don't want to be spending all this time doing this if in the end, you, you folks are gonna say, you know what, this, this isn't for us. My own feelings, and I think I'm speaking for a lot of people in town, therefore, looking into it and seeing if something we can do. Well, I'm hearing the same thing, but I, I think, I think as, you know, you, you folks are our town leaders, and I, and I think it's important that you kind of lead the way from the standpoint of...
Mike, is it, are you looking for a vote from the board to, in support of your project? Is that what you're here for?
I think that would be appropriate.
Because I thought, I thought at the last time you were here, that we left, we left you with the impression that we were in support.
Okay.
So, well, my recollection was, you, you folks were gonna talk about it, and then take a position on it, and I, you know, I watched, I watched on TV, and I haven't seen that, so I guess that's...
We made a motion to proceed.
I can only speak for myself, but I think anything that we can do to advance the project and assist you in that is the right thing to do. So with that being said, if you would like something formalized, I'd gladly put a motion on the table.
Do that, please.
That the Board of Selectmen support the efforts of the RTIC in pursuing the assisted living concepts for Rutlandite's hospital property.
I'll second it, with just a question, maybe, why wouldn't we?
I have no idea.
Why, we, we're relying on RTIC's process with this, so unless you told us a reason why we shouldn't, it, it's a viable, useful project from a company that's...
Run you burying.
Well, that, for me, or a company that is well-known and respected in the industry, I'm, just made me question, you know, why wouldn't we?
I, I have no idea why you wouldn't, but, you know, the, one of the things the developer has asked for is for us to come back to them and say, look, we haven't got the money figured out on how to deal with this, but we, in general, you know, we, and I'd like to be able to say to them, the Select Board supports, the Finance Committee supports, the Planning Board supports, we've got all these, all these boards who have, you know, discussed it and are supportive of it, because what, if you recall, what, what they said was, you come back to us and show us your intent, and then we'll show you ours by doing our due diligence to determine whether Rutland's a place we can and want to be. So we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ananamous.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Kelleher.
I just, I just want to give you, I just forgot about this, I got lost in the traffic. Just to give you an update on the expenses of snow and ice this year, I just wanted to tell you, because I'm, I'm gonna have to get the approval for overexpending. So I just wanted to tell you, currently, we spent $122,816, $116 on salt, $5,800 on sand, and contractors ran us about $65.29. So out of the $154.5, which is the total line item, we have spent $135.2. So I just wanted to let you know, with other expenses for other equipment and other items, such as machinery maintenance for snow and ice, and so on and so forth, we have roughly right now a balance of about $8,000, which if needed, for salt, because that's the highest priced item, it would be 130 ton of salt. So we are full now, everything's okay, maybe winter's over, but ask me tomorrow, and I'll let you know where we are. But I just wanted to, just to give that heads-up, because I believe Margaret approves the overexpenditure now of the snow and, snow and ice line item, so it does not have to go for approval before the board, is that correct?
That's my assumption, but...
Okay, so I just wanted to give you, let you know where we are with the money, okay?
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, could I request you just send us a note to your vote?
Oh, yes. It'll be all taken care of.
Might I suggest you send this guy home, because he's probably gonna be out plowing all night?
He's still already, where you been?
He's not going home. I think that's what we're hearing. He's gonna take up a residence in his office. I'm on the profit road, the best-maintained road in town. Thanks for the candy.
Abby, what, what time do you come in in the morning, if you come in?
I know.
What are the chances we can get him, even a draft form letter, in case his 9 o'clock meeting happens, because it's tomorrow?
I don't see that happening.
I don't either, but just in case, just in case.
Do you want a letter by tomorrow?
If you're coming. No, 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 no.
No?
I mean, no, it's not necessary. Well, at our earliest convenience, we'll get you something for us. At your earliest convenience. Based on weather implications? Since, I'm embarrassed to say, I haven't got my town report done yet, I don't think I should be asking for something tomorrow.
All right. Good night, Mike.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, just as, I have a request through the town administrator and through the department heads. I see we have on our agenda this evening, listing all the meeting dates for the upcoming budget meetings that we have scheduled.
Yeah.
One of the things that I think would be very helpful for us, as we go through the process, along with FinCom, is to get updated organizational charts, especially where it refers to staffing from each department. I know DPW, for example, has two, three slots open, Gary, at this point?
I have two permanent slots open, and one person is out for rotator cuff surgery, so out for the, probably the remainder of the winter.
Okay, so as we have those discussions, I think it would be very helpful for both us and FinCom to have updated organizational charts, and also to keep us informed where we stand as a organization. So if I can make that request through the town administrator, it would be helpful.
You got that?
All right. At all possible, it would be great to see if we can get them by the 29th, I know we've got meetings scheduled between now and then, but it would be helpful to, by our next board meeting, to have those in our packets.
Margaret made that, is it updated, Abby? I think it is. Margaret has it posted in her office, the org chart?
I think it might list just...
Positions.
Not the name.
Okay.
Yeah, which is fine, but I'm just looking to, well, I'm just looking to see what we have open, what's, uh, filled, by position, so if we've got Gary's organization has three open position, there's a references, three open slots in his org chart, as open positions, that, that would be fine, I don't need individual names in the slots. I'm just looking for head counts of that, as we have the budget conversation.
It's up on her bulletin board.
I think it is, but...
The bulletin board to the left, when you're looking at her? Okay, I think she has it.
If it's there, let me know, just cover the, the camera shut off, then we can print it, fine.
I'm sure she can send it to you.
Yeah, if she has it, she can email it out, so, whatever it is. I have nothing, other than, I think, a bunch of, for you, my guy.
Well, Mike, if I could use that one comment to that, because...
No, you shut up. Go home.
Between Nancy and Abby, they've been very helpful in posting these positions, I think the latest place that Abby put, put it on was Indeed. We've received probably eight applications, but unfortunately, none are qualifying. We still have, we still have the...
We really got to, we got to fill those slots.
All right. Go plow, will you? Get some rest first.
Okay, I have to.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Can I?
It's up to the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. So, Mike just brought up a good point that I had thought of earlier when we were up here. He did. It might be better to just have one drop-off point, like at, at the Public Safety Building, rather than having it all over town for the cards. It might be better if we did it just at Dispatch, because then there's 24/7, it's one spot, and we don't have to worry about juggling back and forth with different departments. But I'll...
I would recommend or suggest a phone conversation with Margaret in the morning.
I'll talk to her.
Because she's the one that's going to be talking to the department heads.
Yeah. I'll send her an email tonight, and I'll talk to her in the morning.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Do you have a second on the adjourn?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. [music][1737.65]